...life and then continue, show the community we're continuing to improve it as we have new thoughts and opportunity.
I see this, having spent the dollars that we've spent on this and invested the time with the community, the staff, I see this as a document that it's a beginning, not an end. So, it will be modified, changed as we evolve with the school, as students, as education evolves. So, I think that we just need to have that component of flexibility. And, we also need to communicate that, yes, we want to have it by every six months report back, we want to have it on the agenda every other month, so that we as a board are seeing the efforts that are being made on the strategic plan moving forward.
Yeah, I think we could, I could absolutely add it as an agenda item, whether it's every other agenda, whatever it may be. And, again, this should be a living document, this is, I think you put it really well. This is the start. Again, there are a lot of things in here that we know, and whether we left it ongoing, we put 2019, that may now be 2020 or beyond, and there may be things that need to be added as we go and cleaned up as we go. So, this isn't a, I wouldn't call it a final document, I would call it sort of, here's the skeleton, there's some meat on the skeleton, potentially more to be put on and maybe some to come off.
I think that context is helpful, and they asked me about it, I think that's a healthy way to talk about it, but I don't want to get in April's way with the point she was making.
No, I just want to say, I was on the Strategic Planning Committee, and it's my feeling from talking to the other members, and obviously for us, Jody, Perry, and all, Stephen have a comment, I think that it would be easy change, just to change the language, not a bad idea to, like Brian was saying, just refresh the memory of the parents, the community members, the staff, that they are held to these expectations.
It's interesting, because when I had the conversation with Abby Peel regarding Facebook, and I met with Joan Chandler as well, and Joan said something I thought was fairly interesting. When we're posting on Facebook, or putting things in the newspaper, we're writing on our website, it should all tie back to our strategic plan. We should be referencing, here's an example of what we're doing in communication on our strategic plan. And I thought, that's a great way to keep things relevant as well, right? You keep that involved in the conversation, so.
I'd like to see it on the every agenda we have, just even if you talk about it for five minutes, just as a, all right, where are we, is there anything changed, is it still?
Yeah, at least to start, and then we can grow with it, but if we keep it front and center, then we can honor the work that went into it, and we can be more aware of some of the potential ways to improve it.
Agreed.
Any more discussion, any further questions? So, let's see, who?
Nobody motioned at all yet.
So, I make a motion to approve the strategic plan.
Motion made by Jesse, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. We've had ample discussion, do we want more?
Have we thanked the participants?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, that's a lot of time and effort went into this.
Lot of work.
Yeah, and it's sometimes a thankless job.
We absolutely have, and we will continue to do so, and I will just quickly, if I could, read their names.
Please do.
Amanda Barton, teacher, SMHS. Anna Minor, parent, April Roy School Board Member. Corinne Lavazza, teacher, SMHS. Erin Terry, parent, Heather Furlong School Board Rep. Jackie Keegan, teacher, SCES. Joanne Skarin, teacher, SCES. Joan Chandler, community member. Julian Johnson, community member. Laurie Bolch, parent. Maria Fair, parent. Jody Bergen, principal. Sean Monahan, principal. Terry Gier, Director of Special Education, Russ Holden, and John Kennedy from Mezdeck.
Thank you, Russ. Motion's made by Jesse, seconded by Brian, we will need a roll call vote, so I'll start with you, April.
Yes.
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 Yes. Unanimously passes. Thank you. Moving on to proposed SMHS coaches, I'll do this the proper way, we'll entertain a motion, and we'll have discussion.
Make a motion to accept the coaches as part of the.
Can I add the three names?
You can when.
When you're ready.
When we're ready.
Okay.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Ed. Now, we're in discussion phase. Before we discuss, Russ would like to add to our coaching list a few coaching names and positions.
Thank you. Bass fishing, Rod Messenger. Boys, middle school soccer, A Team, Katie Flint. B Team, Peter Salvini.
Okay. And, I'll let you mention the two that were.
Norm Dalton, girls JV soccer, and girls varsity basketball, Stephanie Lopender.
Okay. Any questions on the slate of coaches that have been presented?
Is that Phil or teaching master, sorry, is that everyone we need?
Yes, we were recruiting heavily on middle school A and B team today.
April?
Got it, Phil.
That was my question, so.
Okay. I do have a question, and we've spoken about it before, with our varsity basketball coach, could you tell me the process that that went through?
Sure. Ms. Fox, no, Tim picked up a position down in Concord, we had the position open, we advertised for the position, we actually went and did some recruiting, we had an eye on a couple folks in another district, across the way there that we went and spoke with, unfortunately wasn't interested at that time, we did some interviewing, candidate rose to the top, she actually did some coaching for us, and picked up the summer position as well, and I hired her on as the summer coach, to run the summer program.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion?
Do we, do anything to thank Tim for his legacy?
I would defer that to Sean, and I would say.
We continue to thank him.
I was going to say, I'm sure he's reminded every day of his legacy.
Katie, you had a point?
Can you please tell Peter's last name, please?
Peter Salvi.
No, I can't.
I think I can get it. S A L D I T I.
Yeah, it's Salviti.
Salviti?
I thought it was Salvini, so that's why.
That's what I thought, so.
So, V.
And it's just for middle school soccer, or middle school?
Middle school soccer.
Middle school, B.
A, B.
Any further discussion, or any further questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, and we will do a roll call again. April?
Yes.
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on our action items will be 2017, 2018 budget conversation. So, I'll entertain a motion to start discussion on that.
Motion to start the discussion on 2017, 18 budget.
Thank you, Jesse. Motion by Jesse, seconded by Brian. All right. Russ, I'm going to kick this to you, we're going to, I put this on the agenda because I want to start it, so you've got a bunch of numbers.
Yeah, there's a lot of things here, I think that are important, and as Paul said, we had talked about this, and one of the things we talked about is coming into our budget season, if there were any specifics that the board was interested in, or any goals budget-wise that the board wanted to talk to now, we're being a little more proactive, because generally you folks do, and you get to take a look at the budget until October, so we felt at least having a conversation before we got into the budget season, so if there was input, some things you wanted us to look at. At the same time, I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview from past budgets, and I wanted to talk about this year's budget, and potentially bringing some money forward, which we had tabled at our last session regarding the 2.5, 2.5 capital reserve account. So, before I get into those things, let me give you just a little history. So, dating back to 2011, 2012, our budget was 10 million, we'll call it 10 million 300, all those use round numbers, and at that point in time, we gave back about $330,000. 1213, we had a budget of about 10.7, we gave about $300,000 back. 1314, about 10.8, we gave 229 back, and 1415, we had 11.1, we gave 181 back, and last year we had 11.4, and we gave back about 351,000. This year, we're looking projected at somewhere between 300,000 and 400,000, and a couple of reasons why those numbers are, I call them positive, and it's not because of over-budgeting. We picked up 150,000, 160,000 each year in revenue for tuition, and that's unanticipated revenue. In last year, in the year before, we budgeted our full health insurance, GMR rate, so if we had a seven, they said it was going to come in at 12, we budgeted that whole rate. So, two years ago, we did this, we were at nine, Kelly, and it went to, they recommended going to 14, we went to the full 14, and ended up only going to, I think 9.7, whatever it was, went up very little, so we had an additional $150,000 in the budget that's going back this year to the town. This year, when we made the budget, went through the budget process, we really started to hone down on some of that history. So, we looked at our GMR rates over the last five years, we looked at oil consumption, electricity consumption, fuel, diesel, we really started, Kelly and I were really able to get, in our tenure here, a better picture historically of what we spent, and what was left over, and the budget for next year, I feel is probably one of the tighter budgets that we've had moving into it, to the point where, if folks remember, we took a gamble, and our growth, our GMR rate came in at 18%, and we were at a 14.1, and I said, Kelly, looking at the history, where it hasn't really changed, let's gamble, and let's hold our number at the 14.1, which we budgeted the year before. If we missed, it was about an $85,000 increase, we were going to have to go find the budget, but it allowed us to flatline that health insurance line. Well, lo and behold, it came in right at the 14.1, so it only cost us a few thousand dollars for different plans that people had. So, again, taking the fuel oil, the fuel oil, we cut, we had about $90,000 this year that are going back in fuel, and we shouldn't be carrying that. Now, the winters, last couple winters, a little more temper, but looking over five year history, and so in this current budget that we're in, we had cut fuel oil, I think, by 25 or 30,000, I don't remember where it was, but we reduced that, we reduced electricity. So, I wanted to give you some of those pieces, because I think last year was really one of the years that I felt really comfortable prepping up, giving a budget that really was based upon some historical information. As I sit here and tell you, give you great numbers, that we're giving $300,000 back, or 300 to 400,000 back this year, right now, our health insurance, based upon people taking different plans within our school district, we're $200,000 already short in health insurance line. So, folks that either had a spouse that had a plan, went off that plan, that took our plan, or had a two-person plan, that went to a family plan, and just upon those shifts alone, where it's at some 160,000 to 180,000 right now, overriding that line. I'm a little nervous about that, but again, I know I have some revenue coming in from our tuition students. Now, we are down three tuition students right now, so we're at 16, and I think right now, we'll know better, obviously, Monday, but right now, we're looking at maybe 13. And so, there's a little loss there. So, our budgeting process, I feel, we have a lot more history that we've given you, we've got, gave you a lot more information, I think, last year in the process, for those of you who were involved, and I think we've been able to hone down our budget. So, when I'm talking about giving back 300,000 or 400,000, you may say, wow, you don't need all, let's just cut the budget by that. But it doesn't necessarily, it's not necessarily a reflection of us not budgeting correctly, it's us budgeting correctly, but giving back more revenue than we anticipated, or health insurance that we budgeted for that didn't come in at the mark that we thought it was going to come in at. But that's a, just the overall budget piece. The two pieces for this year that I'd like you to consider, in the last, in our last board meeting, we talked about the 2.5 account, which is a lot, the RSA allows us to carry 2.5 percent of our net assessment, is that right, then?
Net assessed value.
Net assessed value, as a contingency, so if something ever happened within our budget, we ran out of a lot of money, we could go dip into that. Right now, there's $175,000 in that account, we had recommended at the end of last year adding another 25. With knowing that we are in that, potentially in that 400,000 range, we would recommend putting $75,000 in, bringing that line to 250, which basically taps out, caps that line, it would be at its full capacity.
So, the 2.5 percent is of our net assessed value of the assets in the town of Sonopie?
It's given to us by the DRA.
Okay.
And that comes in at 268,000, is that what it was going?
263.
263, thank you. And so, we were thinking, if we have some of that money this year, if you wanted to, you could add that money back in, and just tap that account off, and then you have that account full, if you needed it. The other piece that, and this is sort of an unexpected piece, our vehicle that we've had is a 2009, it's got 60,000 miles on it roughly, the transmission went once at the end of last year, we put it in, over the summer, the transmission went in again, it's under warranty, it has been fixed, but our thought is, given that it's a 10-year-old vehicle with that many miles, if that transmission goes again, it's not going to be worth much as far as trying to resell that thing, potentially allowing us to take $25,000 out of our reserve, our fund, I call it a fund balance, so we'll be going back to the town and putting money aside to go purchase a new truck for the district.
This is the pickup truck?
This is the pickup truck. And again, that's a 2009 with about 60,000, 60,000 miles.
What, it goes from here to the dump?
It goes here to the dump, it does some plowing, and it goes from building to building, and it brings lunches from building to building. The piece that I would add as a caveat, if we decided to go with the, putting some money aside for the pickup truck, is that we spend somewhere between 2,000 and 3,000 a year to plow the SAU, that's a third-party contract to start down by the town, if we got the pickup truck, the new pickup truck, I would have us pick up the SAU account, and we would no longer be spending that money on a third-party vendor. So, that's a lot of information, I know, and I, and I'll go back to the original question, is what are the goals that maybe you have for us, going into the budget season? We've talked about, continuing to give you a more historical perspective, maybe having folks even run each department, give a little narrative about, here's where they're at, this is why they're doing it, this is what they hope to attain, and here's sort of looking forward on their next steps.
Well, I like the fact that we're budgeting on actual numbers, dollars spent, rather than on prior budgeted numbers, and just adding a percent.
Right.
To that, so I like, I'm thankful that you guys are digging into the numbers and looking at what we've actually spent, and a lot of these fixed costs are just that.
Right.
Variable in heat, variable in electricity, but I consider those to be pretty much fixed costs, so, thank you for doing that.
Agreed.
Your ask, go ahead, Brian.
Sorry, when do employees have to choose their health plan? Because it seems disconcerting that it sneaks up on us, and suddenly, there's a.
Well, I just want to, and I want to just put this out there, because this, and I should have led with this, remember, this budget gets started in October of this year, for July 1 of next year.
And when do the employees have to choose their health plan?
They have open enrollment in July, so some of the people who are taking a buyout, they also changed, and they came onto our plans, so they're supposed to continue, so that was different for us this year as well.
Yeah, there's no way to budget that.
We tried, we tried to, but again, to, right, to throw, we generally put a little in there, right, but 200,000, we wouldn't put in there.
Well, I know we're in action items, I'm not sure I see any action items here, other than the 2.5 contingency fund, and possibly a pickup truck, is any of, any of the board members interested in making a motion on either one of those two items?
Did we discuss the 2.5 account? Last meeting, we said we weren't going to put any money into it, we're going to give it back to the town, was that the gist of it, I'm not sure.
We were, and go ahead, Paul.
Well, I think that was your statement, based upon, based upon the fact that we had torrential rain, roads wash out, and I think one of our select board members went up to the microphone and spoke.
But after the fact, we were done, so I thought we concluded we weren't going to save the money.
You did, and you tabled it, and that's why, you tabled it, and that's why I brought it back, given now that I thought we heard that the town may have the finances needed, and given that we had some additional money if you wanted to do that.
Right, and I, I don't think we tabled it, I think it's next year, and we're.
Say it again? Could you repeat yourself, April?
I don't, sure, I don't think we tabled it, I have the same reflection as Brian, that we decided we weren't going to do it at all this year, and we'll just revisit next year.
Yeah, I think in a minute it says table, table to next year, April, I believe is what it said in a minute.
Well, in either event, it would need a motion from a board member here to do that, and is there a motion?
I'm just trying to keep up, so we, I thought we agreed for next year, so then, the next meeting, we're, is there an urgency for right now?
We have to have it to close the books, one, but there's another piece of this, I think, that is interesting, and this is a, it's not a look behind the curtain, it's the reality to it, being tax neutral, and being tax negative. So, giving two, giving a higher number back to the town than was projected, a much higher number, brings, potentially brings a tax rate in as a negative, which people might say, that's great, we're getting a negative tax rate, but the next year, when we hit a 2.2 percent increase, people are going to say, well, wait a minute, that's not a 2 percent increase, that's a 5 percent increase.
Right.
Right? And so, part of that, part of our conversation, from a budgetary standpoint, is saying, how do we continue to try to stay tax neutral, would do the things that we need to do within our community and for our school, without continuing to go back and tax, or re-tax?
So, let me ask a simple question, the amount of money that is unspent in our budget, how much is that as of today?
We have a number, an inconsistent number, because we're still closing up, but it's somewhere between, right now, we're estimating 350 to 400,000.
Okay. So, 350 to 400?
Waiting for audit.
Right, we're still waiting for an audit in September.
So, with the 75 to 2.5 account.
We think with the 75, we're going to, we're going to be in that 300 to 350 ballpark.
And with that 2, 2.5 account?
Yeah.
Then, that is not going to be an item, we'll have capped out on what the MAC says, so that won't be an item next year.
Won't be an item on the warrant for next year.
Was it net assessed value?
Right, I just, I just think that point could get missed, so I wanted to just state it that way.
We're kind of taking that off the table, moving forward.
So, if we give back the 300, 350,000, what's that do to our tax rate, is that neutral?
We don't know, we think if we can stay in the 300 to 350, again, these are, we're playing with numbers that we don't have all the information on, but we think if we can stay between 3 and 350, we're going to be at that.
About 2 percent.
About that 2 percent. Right, so it's not, it's above a tax neutral, it's not a tax negative. If we get into the 400, we'd be possibly looking at a tax, where you have a tax, a negative tax impact.
So, of the contingency funds that exist in the Sonopie School District, we have the 2.5.
Yeah.
We have an elementary school.
Yeah.
We have elementary school building.
Facility, we have a district and high school facility, and you have a special ed.
And special ed.
And a roof, excuse me, and the roof, none of which we could take money out of to buy the truck.
Right. I was just looking at the total dollars available.
Oh, okay.
In the event we had a, had some sort of an issue arise in the future, so the elementary school facilities are covered with.
It's around 900,000 between.
So, we have around $900,000 sitting in a rainy day fund.
Between all the capitals.
Between, that are specifically allocated, there are four capital fund balances that are allocated for specific tasks. Okay, I just want to get clear on that.
Yeah, no, it's great, it's great conversation.
How much was the repair on the truck, for the transmission each time it goes?
The second was under warranty, and I don't recall the first transmission piece.
Are we going to buy a new truck for, for the sake of a 1,500 dollar repair?
Yeah, so we've gone and looked at government pricing, and so we can get a 17, four-wheel-drive, two-door, stripped down with the tow package, for 22, either an F-150, and there's, there were three of them, there's two F-150s, and there's a Dodge 2500 for 23.
And how much is the one estimated?
The assessed value on the one that we currently have, I don't know, so like I said, it's 10 years old, 60,000.
The accounting, when will the audit be complete, and when does the, when would we cut the check back to the town? Before or after our next meeting?
Yeah, well, before.
We're about to do the DOE 25 report.
So, that's why I'm having the conversation now, because Kelly has to start crunching her numbers to put that report together for the auditors come in to do the audit.
They come in the 25th of September. So, not before, I'm asking, next month, September 6.
Not before, did I say before?
Yeah, you did.
Sorry, not before.
Okay. Is there any motion to be made by any of the board members for this?
When he moved, and he seconded, or vice versa, for the discussion, nobody did the all roll call thing for that, so, when you guys moved to go into discussion?
Correct, we're in discussion now, and it's, it's an action item that is more informational than it is action, because there's not a, there's not a specific request on our budget conversation, as it's presented on the action item, so, there isn't, if we were to vote yes on action item, what would that mean?
So, I guess, is there a request right now to put 75,000 in that fund, and a request to go buy a new pickup truck?
Yes.
So, do we need a motion to discuss those, or?
You would need to, you would need to make a motion on each one of those.
Would we be able to call next week?
Yeah, and you don't have to do, if you wanted to do 50, you could do 50, if you wanted to just do the 25, like you originally wanted to do, you could do that.
April had a question.
April?
I just said, or we could still table them for the next meeting, if you think she doesn't need them until after the next meeting?
No, her numbers would need to be in for the audit to be done, which would happen after the next meeting.
So, you need a decision, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Just, go ahead, I understand, you're talking about giving back 350 to 400,000 right now, and we're asking you about taking 75,000 of that 350 to 400 out, and then we would give back the remainder, so it's not 350, 400?
No, this would, so this would be an additional, so we've, we've, telling you that, taking, we've already budgeted that 75 out, in our head, that number that I'm giving you, that 350 to 400, is what the 75 out.
So, it's truly 425 to 475?
Right, right.
Okay.
That's where I was.
There's a better way of asking that question.
And, this specific fund is for, this one we're talking, you said we have 900,000 in this fund, this specific fund would cover what?
Urgencies.
Like a roof repair, or?
It could be, it could be that, it could be if, for whatever reason, health insurance ran us, and we didn't budget enough, we could.
What I was just going to ask.
Everything but salary is, I understand.
Everything but salary, I can.
Because you're talking about already being over 200,000 on insurance, where do you feel that may come from? Are you just saying, because we've been running 300,000 over every year, we're hoping that we can fit it in that 300,000?
I'm hoping that with the 50 that we put in that line, and the revenue that I make off of tuition, that I'm going to be able to cover that, and knowing that we're not going to spend exactly 10, 12.2 million, right, that we've even, we've put in our budget to give back, was it 100,000? We've projected giving back that 100,000 at the end of next year, anyway.
And then, one last question, because I'm just sort of a little different, but the teacher salaries are negotiated, is that, when that's negotiated, does that include the health insurance? So, we, for however many years it is, I believe it's another.
One more after this, yes.
Regardless of, everybody said we need insurance, and we're taking it all, and I think it's between, it's around 22 to 24,000 a family, I believe.
Families almost at 30.
It's almost at 30. So, if everybody said that, we would, we're obligated because of the contract to pay that.
To pay it.
Yeah, so, you want a motion?
Well, according to Kate, and I know that Kate's right.
You need a motion to make a motion.
I don't know what we would be voting on currently, I can't, call.
Well, the first, you really didn't need a motion to discuss, you should have talked about it, and then made the motions of the truck and the, and the 2.5, if you wanted to, so, because right now, you're kind of hanging motions, nobody did the all thing, but.
Well, what we can do is, to be, we could either amend it, or, or we send it, move forward, so, either, either one gives the same result.
Whatever you want to do.
Sure.
That's on me, it's my mistake, so.
I'll rescind my motion.
Well, you can modify your motion.
I'll rescind it.
Okay.
Jesse actually did it, so.
Oh, Jesse did.
I would like to rescind.
By a second? Okay.
By a second?
Did I resend the second?
Yeah.
Yes.
And we will need to have a roll call on that vote, I believe, to rescind it. So April, I'll go to you.
Yes, true.
Yes, thank you. Ed, Brian, Jesse, Paul, yes. So now, what we're in the discussion phase on is...
Whether you want to make a motion.
Whether we want to make a motion to, for the capitalized two point five contingency fund in the amount of X dollars.
Yeah.
And/or, or and, talk about a truck, or have that dollar amount for the vehicle come out of the seventy-five. Those are all things that can happen.
Can we pull, there was something about pulling out of the, out of the trucks out of the capital. We could pull it out of the, we can't pull out of, we can't pull out of the two point five either, right?
Well, let's, let's separate, let's separate the two right now, because I think...
You have unfair money.
Yeah.
I think we, I want to make a motion on the truck. Can I have the floor do so?
You may, Jesse, make a motion.
I think it would be wise for us to get a new truck and not deal with further trouble on a ten-year-old truck. So make a motion for twenty-five thousand dollars, as proposed, for an updated truck.
Out of the unreserved fund.
Out of the unreserved fund balance. Do we want to also add to that, and I'm just making this as a suggestion, is, we have a vehicle now, do we want to trade that in towards? What are we going to do with the vehicle that we have?
Well, we were trading in, if we got revenue back, you get us unanticipated revenue at the end of the year.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're clear on how it goes.
Yeah, that's part of the budget.
So Jesse's motion is twenty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of a vehicle out of the unreserved fund, is that what, unreserved fund balance?
And I said you truck, so you say vehicle or truck?
Could be a truck.
Okay. So that's Jesse's motion. Is there a second, any other board member for that motion?
A second for motion.
Seconded by Ed. Now we're going to discuss anything else that needs to be discussed on that.
Do we really need a truck? Sorry, two thousand and nine, that's a little old, sixty thousand miles, it's not all...
It could use, it's used.
Spend a couple thousand dollars and keep it going, or...
Well, so if, if the transmission didn't fail the second time, I would say, because that's why we fixed the transmission the first time.
Put a new one in?
Put a new one in, and the second one now has failed, and it just came back, and it got back today. And my fear is, we're going to get to the middle of the winter, and it's going to fail again.
Is four-wheel drive plowing now?
This is, yes. So we would, again, we got government pricing on them. We would take over the SAU, which is anywhere between two and three thousand dollars a year, so we cut that back over the ten years of just plowing the SAU you bought your truck.
So why don't we do that anyways? So why don't we not buy the truck and take over the SAU?
Well, because we don't have anything to plow.
So this one doesn't have a plow?
This one, I think part of our issue, it does have the plow, but I think plowing, the truck isn't handling the plowing well, the little bit that we do around the building just to clean up. I can't say that specifically because I'm...
No, it's rough on them.
So just to be clear, though, you have the reserve funds. If we decide not to do it now, at any point throughout the year, if it break again in the middle of winter, you still have that reserve, you can plow from that time.
Not for the truck, not even the two point five. Because the other ones are for the building, a specific purpose, roof, special ed, or building.
Two point five is for emergency.
The two point five would be for emergency, and I'm not sure how much of emergency it would be to buy a new truck in February.
So do we have to make this motion tonight because of closing up the budget, is what you're saying?
That's why we bring it, because if we, again, if we had this information back in June, we got in the truck and the second transmission, we would have the conversation.
That's what I ask, because I went through the same exact problem in the town of Goshol, the pickup truck that had sixty-five thousand miles, and it was oh-seven. It was a ten-year-old truck, and it was five thousand dollars, forty-nine hundred for the dealership to put a transmission in it. I knew I wanted one more year out of the truck, and I drove the truck up to Miller and found out, because of government pricing, it's a set price for a quad cap, it's thirty-two thousand, and found out that I was getting ten thousand for trade-in, and was able to go before my border, and I only had to ask for twenty-two because of the value of the truck. So if we had a value of the truck that only has sixty thousand miles and should have a pretty decent value, I think instead of talking about twenty-five, we'd be talking probably somewhere around fifteen or sixty.
Hundred percent right, Ed, hundred percent right. But I would say, taking the twenty-five out and giving what we get in the trade back at the end of the year. So you might have spent the twenty-five, but you may get ten back, you may get eight back.
Does the trade, does the trade go back to the dealer, or is it sold?
We would try to go to the dealer first, obviously, and make that, and make that deal that way. So the two dealers that we would be dealing with would be Erwin, and Erwin has the F-250, and there's a Hillsborough CDJR.
If we didn't have the issue with the timing on the funds in this window, I probably wouldn't have made the same motion the same way. But just being practical with the window we have to make the decision, the likelihood that a plow truck is going to continue to break, and this is a little more, to me, this feels like the right thing to do, and update the vehicle, it's important to the system, and move on.
Does it have to be spent before the...
No, so if we uncover the, what you're telling, giving us permission to do is uncover the money.
Yep.
Right? I then now can say, Matt, go see what you get on a resale, or do you want to wait another month and see what we do? Or do you want to wait till it breaks and then go buy it? But is it, I'm with Ed that I might be able to get more for it now than I could when I put my third transmission in it. So if I get more for it now, let's go get it now, and let's just make the math work and get it for as cheap as we can.
What kind of truck is it?
A Ford.
Or not go back a Ford?
Well, it's a Ford short bed, and I wasn't here when we bought it, and I'm not sure why we bought it.
Okay.
You're going to keep the plow and transfer the plow over to the new truck?
That's our, that's our proposal, yes.
All right, so there's a motion made by Jesse, seconded by Ed, we're currently discussing. Is there any more discussion before I call for a vote?
I just want to say, I think we want to be very careful not to fall into any kind of unnecessary pressure for this deadline, because to be clear, even if we give all